Okay, the time is now five forty-seven. I'll call to order this public hearing on the proposed amendment to shared parking zoning ordinance. This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment regarding the proposed amendment to the shared parking zone zoning ordinance by allowing shared parking within one thousand five hundred feet from a principal use measured along lines of public access, which includes walking distance in the C one, C two, C three, C four, C five, U M, R four and R five zoning districts. Jared, would you, would you mind giving a brief overview of the ordinance?
Uh, sure. This is a relatively straightforward text amendment. The zoning ordinance already provides for a three hundred foot distance between a principal use in a parking lot if it's shared or a joint parking lot. Um, all this text amendment does is sort of clarify how we determine the route and it extends it from three hundred feet out to fifteen hundred feet within urban districts.
And the, and the ordinance was properly advertised under the F P C?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any comment from the public on this ordinance? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Well, that was nice and easy. Does, does council have any, any comments they'd like to make at all?
Just, um, first of all, thank to Jared for leading up this, uh, teeing up this discussion for the land use reform subcommittee. Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank Jared for, um, walking us through and teeing this up for discussion and eventual, uh, public disclosure. Um, it does reflect, um, the priorities of the climate action committee's uh, goal to reduce vehicle miles traveled, to increase housing density and, um, and that from those two goals is very consistent with some of our other, um, community goals. So just wanted to add that to the discussion.
Thank you, Council Hicks. Anything else? Then I will adjourn this hearing and we will reconvene for our regular meeting at six o'clock. Thank you. Time is now six o'clock. It's time for our regular Borough Council meeting, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We begin with a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance flag led by Councilor Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I wanted to, um, call out the fact that last, um, week, March eighth was International Women's Day, which is a day in which we celebrate the achievements of women socially, economically, culturally, politically. Um, and I, I want to underscore the fact that I'm proud to, to be up here with, um, a majority female council, which is not the first time that that has happened in Carlisle's history, but it's pretty exciting to be a part of, particularly when we consider that a century ago, none of the four of us could vote. Um, and I don't know that everyone knows that International Women's Day has actually been celebrated as far back as nineteen ten. Um, it was proposed as a day, um, in which around the world, women could meet together to press for their demands, whether it be demanding voting rights, demanding, um, better pay, better hours, et cetera. And so along those lines, I also want to point out that two days ago, March twelfth was Equal Pay Day, um, which is a symbolic day, which marks, um, the number of days, extra days a woman would have to work past December thirty-first of the previous year to earn the same as her male counterpart. Um, and women still today make on average eighty-four cents to every dollar that men, um, work. And to be frank, for women of color, that's much worse. It's an average, I think, of sixty-nine cents to every dollar if you're a black woman. Um, so just pointing out that while we've come very far since nineteen ten, we still have a lot of work to do. So I'd like us to consider that as we move forward. And now the pledge.
Mr. Secretary of the Roll, please.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Here.
Ms. Mellon.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Rus.
Here.
Mr. Stube.
Here.
Mayor Schultz.
Here.
Next is an opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard. Um, anyone may at this point address, uh, council on any subject of, of council borough business. Uh, now's your opportunity. If you would like to do so and you're here with us, you need to go up to the podium, give your name and address from the minutes, please. We know who your arm is, but.
Hi, uh, Mitch Shiles, uh, six twenty-four West Lowder Street. Um, I just wanted to, uh, we finally, uh, found the meeting online of the thirty-first, um, and watched it. And I just wanted to, um, support, uh, Council Landis's statement or, uh, the Deputy Mayor Landis's statement that, uh, of extending the parking protected bike lane as far as you can, uh, in the plan, so that, uh, we're not sort of, um, there's separation from traffic as much as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Go, go ahead Buck. And also we'll, we'll take your applause anytime you want to give it. I saw.
I'm a rookie at social events, so please excuse me. And, uh, things come to me in a hurry, you know, I get a rush. So I miss many things. I brought some props with me tonight. I want to talk about myself and history. So, um, people want to know who I am, why, what am I doing here? Why am I disruptive? And I don't mean to be. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I really need you. You're keen. You keep me under control. I'm sorry I don't recognize everybody else yet, but I will through time. My name is Don Richie Smith, Richie with a T. Some people call me Buck. My cousin Terry Nicky, he works at the, uh, where he's done a lot of research at Cumberland County Historical Society, and he loves, uh, genealogy and history. So it made me think, um, Pine Grove. I like industry. If you go to the Cumberland County Historical Society, you'll see a fireback in a fireplace. Pine Grove, let liberty be thine. I sold that to the Historical Society in nineteen eighty because I owned it. And I'm glad it's there. So, and I like history. Meeting House Springs seventeen thirty-two. And then the Pens came and they stake out the square and the Church of England's there, but the Presbyterians come up and they build their church right next to it. And within a couple of years, you know, they're declaring independence from England. I'm fascinated by all that. My local history. Um, my father graduated from Carlisle High School in nineteen twenty-five. Carlisle High School, the old Lamberton Building. And he lived at the corner of West South Street and Moreland Avenue, big brick house. And, um, his father had a greenhouse up there at the high school hill. And when I was here a month or so ago and I said, my father, that was my father's development, I did not misspeak. My mother was written out of the will. She didn't own any, any of that. She was married with eight children and she was written out of the will. So it's part of women's history. My mother had thirteen children. I was numbered eleven. I had a reputation by the time I was born. So I imagine the humility my father must have felt being married with eight kids and his wife written off. I saw my mother as a hard worker. I think my father liked math. He became a registered surveyor after he developed that parcel of ground up there. And, uh, he knew I was going to graduate nineteen seventy-five. He didn't make it. He died in seventy-three insolvent. He died insolvent. Now, the house I grew up in, which I thought was my mother's, really belonged to me and all my brothers and sisters and their spouses. So I became the man of the house in nineteen seventy-five at seventeen years old. Fortunately for me, I got a job at Sunnyside Restaurant. I saw the family enterprise. I took that knowledge and I took it home and I fixed up my mother's house. And by nineteen seventy-nine, I had twenty people sign the house over to my mother after I had Coakley's Electric, Herman's Plumbing. You name into that house fixing it up. I gave that house to my mother for one dollar in nineteen seventy-nine. I was twenty-two years old. So I see things, I organize, I work for things, I plan things, I see them through. So you know, there's risk involved when we take on a project. No guarantees. And so when the Maslin slate was up for redevelopment and I saw the idle train track and people asking, what do you want to do here? I raised my hand. They were the ones asking for tax increment financing. So, you know, I'd like to know where we are, where that stands. And, um, and I, I have, I see chaos. And when I see this trash program, it's chaotic. And I know about trash. When I worked at Sunnyside six nights a week, I was a salary employee at nineteen years old. Part of my responsibility was taking out the trash. You know, and eventually break down the box, break down the boxes. It's either me or the kitchen people. And, you know, now I'm calling the police about neighbors burning trash because, you know, we used to have incinerators in town. I didn't know what burning trash smells like. So I see things in town that need fixed. Now, and I don't mean to, to step on people's toes, but I've been in touch with Representative Barb Blimes, Carlisle Office, her staff. And, um, they said if I can bring a plan in, they'll, they'll put it on her desk. I'm late. I should have had it there three weeks ago. I haven't been able to pull my plans together. I just started this week going around the townships, getting their maps, pointing out intersections that I think, you know, we can target to help detour this truck traffic when there's accidents and just a lot of things. I, I just have a vision. And so even though my father didn't make it to his, um, fiftieth high school reunion, he made it in nineteen seventy. He made it. And, uh, this was his gift. He gave, he was a surveyor. I think he became the surveyor after, uh, his development didn't turn out right up there in Penn Street with that nice wide street. So they gave him a yardstick, four feet is better than three. Fantastic. But, um, so that's where I am in this, uh, this town. I think my grandfather planted Diomtiris around the square. I think there's one remaining. My other grandfather played in the Carlisle Indian Band. So I've been here a long time. Down through all these streets and alleys, on bicycles, walking, driving. And, um, so, you know, eleven years ago, when I met with, uh, County Commissioner and I met, uh, the phone conference of the, uh, Tri-County Planning Commissioner spokesperson and with the Borough Manager and Borough Engineer, they all listened to me. So I'm hoping that the Borough will invite me to meet with the manager and the engineer and discuss some of my ideas. See if we can put it to work. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Still, still no one by Zoom. Okay. Uh, we will move on. Next is the consent agenda. It's a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. It can be acted on by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda and that item will be considered separately. Is there anybody requesting an item be removed? Okay, I see none. Uh, then I will, uh, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Council Mellon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, by Council Perry. Right. It's one of those nights we're going to be a little bit off tonight, aren't we? Uh, any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. And the motion carries. And on to the regular agenda. There are no table continued recurring items. Nothing under my report. Uh, on to economic development. Council Perry.
Um, so tonight I make a motion, I have one item. Um, I make a motion for Borough Council to authorize the drafting and advertising of an ordinance to, to enter into an agreement by in between the Downtown Carlisle Association and the Borough of Carlisle retroactive to January first to twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Second. Second by Council Stube. I told you it's coming all night. Uh, there's a motion and a second, um, to authorize the drafting and advertising of an ordinance center in agreement by in between the Downtown Carlisle Association and the Borough, our annual agreement. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
And that concludes my report.
Motion carries. I realize I was the one who was off because I usually repeat the, uh, the motion a bit, so. Um, next is public safety. I move the council approve the purchase of a two thousand twenty-four Ford F-one fifty Lightning Special Service Vehicle through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars. New Holland Auto Group, who the vehicle will be purchased from, is a Co-Stars vendor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Rus. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, oh, go ahead, go.
Simplified, Chief, simplified. Thank you. Thanks for doing due diligence, looking at how to recapitalize and I'm glad it'll meet your mission requirements and, um, it'll be a quiet ride. Uh, I hope, look forward to getting around the block in one of those, those two vehicles. So thank you for making that happen.
Thank you, Council Hicks. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. On the public works, Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of items this evening. First, I move that Borough Council authorize the mayor to sign the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Sewage Facilities Planning Module Exemption Form for a connection to the Borough's sanitary sewer system for the proposed Dunkin' Donuts land development at Two Hauser Lane.
Council Stube makes a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a planning module exemption for the Dunkin' Donuts. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Any discussion? Now I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Next, they move that Borough Council authorize the full release of the financial security posted by Northside Village LLC for the Lot Five Northside Village Land Development Plan in the amount of eighty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars to reflect completion of the onsite improvements for the project.
Council Stube makes a motion for the full release of financial security posted by Northside Village, uh, noting that the completion of onsite improvements, uh, is finished. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
I move that Borough Council approve the purchase of four SCAG riding lawnmowers from Cut Above Lawns of Carlisle, Pennsylvania for forty-six thousand thirty-one dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Co-Stars Program.
Council Stube makes a motion for the purchase of four riding lawnmowers in the amount of forty-six thousand thirty-one dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion passes.
Next, they move that Borough Council approve the replacement of the Ridge Street Pumping Station Wetwell Walkway by PSI Pumping Solutions Incorporated of York Springs, Pennsylvania for forty-six thousand two hundred ten dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Co-Stars Program.
Council Stube makes a motion to approve the replacement of the Ridge Street Pumping Station Wetwell Walkway uh, for forty-six thousand two hundred ten dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Next, they move that Borough Council approve entering into a contract with Gregory W. Myers Masonry LLC of Carlisle, Pennsylvania in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for masonry repairs to the stone wall of the old graveyard, also known as the Molly Pitcher Cemetery.
Council Stube makes a motion to approve entering contract, into a contract with Gregory W. Myers Masonry for a continued effort to, uh, to repair the old, old stone wall at the old graveyard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
Next, I move that Borough Council award the unit price construction contract for the two thousand twenty-four pedestrian curb ramp rehabilitation project to the lowest responsive bidder, Kinsley Construction LLC of York, Pennsylvania in the amount of one hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred and four dollars and thirty cents. Borough Council may also authorize in any contract change orders needing prompt action in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars each to be approved at the discretion of the Borough Manager and brought before Borough Council for a retroactive approval.
Council Stube makes a motion to award the unit price construction contract for the two thousand twenty-four pedestrian curb ramp rehabilitation project to the lowest responsive bidder, Kinsley Construction in the amount of one hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred four dollars and thirty cents with authorization to the Borough Manager to approve contract change orders up, up to an amount of five thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Any discussion? And I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
Next, they move that Borough Council award the unit price construction contract for the two thousand twenty-four ultra-thin bonded wearing course for local roads paving project to the lowest responsive bidder Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC of Center Valley, Pennsylvania in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Council Stube makes a motion to award the unit price construction contract for the two thousand twenty-four ultra-thin bonded wearing course for our local roads paving project to the lowest responsive bidder Asphalt Maintenance Solutions in the amount of one hundred seven thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion passes. One more.
And finally, I move that Borough Council award the unit price construction contract for the two thousand twenty-four street milling and paving project to the lowest responsive bidder, Kinsley Construction LLC of York, Pennsylvania in the amount of two hundred forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty cents.
Council Stube makes a motion to award the unit price construction contract for the two thousand twenty-four street milling and paving project to the lowest responsive bidder, Kinsley Construction in the amount of two hundred forty-four thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. And now.
So it concludes the Public Works Committee report.
And now that, uh, people have been complaining all winter about potholes and wanting our streets to be repaved, they can complain about construction on our streets. Mr. Hicks, Sustainability and Community Planning.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items tonight. The first one's pertinent to the public hearing we had at five forty-five. Um, and this, this will be council voting on that measure, but I move that council adopt an ordinance amending the code of the Borough Carlisle Chapter two fifty-five by allowing shared parking within fifteen hundred feet from a principal use measured along lines of public access, which includes walking distance in the C one, C two, C three, C four, C five, U M, R four and R five zoning districts.
Council Stube makes a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to allow shared parking within fifteen hundred feet from principal use, measured along lines of public access in the noted, uh, zoning districts. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Count, uh, Deputy Mayor Landis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Roll call. Roll call, please, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Hicks.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Aye.
Ms. Mellon.
Aye.
Ms. Perry.
Aye.
Ms. Rus.
Aye.
Mr. Stube.
Aye.
Mayor Schultz.
Aye.
And the motion carries.
And the last item is an update, uh, but I move that council approve the submission of a multi-municipality climate pollution reduction grant application for twenty-seven million dollars to fund a local energy efficiency improvement and municipal building improvement in Carlisle and Harrisburg.
Council Hicks makes a motion to approve the submission of a multi-municipality climate pollution reduction grant application for twenty-seven million dollars to fund local energy efficient improvement program and municipal building improvements in Carlisle, Carlisle and in partnership with the city of Harrisburg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Count Deputy Mayor Landis. Is there any discussion?
I'll just update. So this is a bit of a, uh, increase in the amount that we had originally discussed a few weeks ago. Um, just to update everybody as to why we expanded the scope a bit. Um, we are still including residential and commercial buildings, uh, improvements, uh, both in Harrisburg and Carlisle. Um, we did, um, Jared received confirmation from D P that it is not their intent to include some of our other projects that were included in the preliminary statewide climate action plan. And as such, they encouraged us that if we really wanted to get those funded, we were going to have to include them in our own application, which prompted us to, uh, take matters in our own hands, to go, go long, go deep, uh, go bold, which, uh, this is what is reflected in work that Delta and, um, representatives from Harrisburg and Carlisle are doing. So, um, uh, what we added on to the scope of this particular grant would be, um, for all intensive purposes, would be getting close to a net zero, um, carbon input on, on all of our municipal buildings. Um, pretty much everything except for solid waste and vehicle fleets would be rolled into this. Um, and yeah, so that, and that, that would hold for both Harrisburg and Carlisle, so. Any other question?
Um, so I, I did read the, the policy brief. Um, so I do see that the twenty-seven million will be split between thirteen million for Carlisle and fourteen for Harrisburg. So I guess I'm okay with that. It's not quite fifty-fifty, close enough. I did want it for a point of clarification. I didn't see this in here, but there is no match for this, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and I'm glad, glad you mentioned that. That's just another good reason, go bold, go long. Um, so, yeah. I, I will, I will add, um, there, there is EPA. The United States Environmental Protection Agency does really have the right to sort of line item things out. They, they said that's not going to be their standard procedure, but they do have that possibility. So, um, there is possibility of no funding, partial funding or complete funding under this.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Thank you, Council Hicks. Uh, next is new business, which we have none, but it's also an opportunity for anybody who didn't want to speak earlier in the meeting to speak, speak now. Mitch, do you want to say anything else now? I'm just messing with you. And you're good. I was, I was just joking. I didn't mean to push you on the spot, Mitch. We appreciate when you come up and chat with us. I'm just trying to string the, the meeting along because by that clock, we shouldn't have even started, so. Stephanie, do we have anybody by Zoom? Okay. Then, uh, we'll go around reports from, uh, members of council and staff. Council Rus.
Sorry, no, I do not have anything to report.
Council Stube. Deputy Mayor Landis. Council Hicks.
Just, um, a heads up, but some of you may know, uh, Monica Carey from, um, one of the solar advocate groups who came and briefed the Climate Action Committee, um, has invited and, and encouraged, um, Carlisle Borough to be part of a multi-county, which includes Dauphin and Cumberland County, um, to, uh, be, be part of basically, uh, a proposal. They would aggregate based on interested households to, um, potentially get rooftop solar at a, at a reduced rate. So you aggregate more households, uh, those who respond, will generally have about a fifteen percent reduction over someone individually going out to find a provider. Uh, there's more information coming. Uh, it doesn't require us to make an official, we're, you know, we're officially in, uh, other than, um, I promised her that we would use our social media to, to let residents know, uh, when, uh, the information meetings were going to happen. Um, and so I will pass that along to staff and to Stephanie, uh, to make sure. to make sure our residents um, are very aware of the opportunity to, to maybe get a reduced cost on rooftop solar, which as many of you know, is, is one of our actions in, in our to increase the uptake of rooftop solar in the borough um, by twenty thirty. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council Perry? Borough Manager Armstrong. Okay, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.